To the November 28, 2018 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing an individual personnel matter and tenure recommendations. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have introductions?
Dave Harson.
Chris Meyer.
Robert Meari.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dillonbaugh.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Willa Bear.
And Judy Kehoe.
And I assume we have some Pink students here tonight. Your obligation is to stay until 9:00 or till the meeting ends, whichever happens first. If we go till 9:00, we'll take a break so you can sign out and get going. And make sure that you sign out on the sheets up here. And if you need anything signed for your teacher, just see any of the board members here. And I want to thank Mrs. Claus and the staff here for welcoming us tonight. Everything's been wonderful, so thank you very much. First thing up is approval of the minutes of the November 7, 2018 regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? One in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? That passes. Do we have anyone here from the Student Senate? You can come up to the microphone.
So currently in Student Senate, we've been working on the holiday food guide, which we hand out to kids and put them all over. So that's basically what we've been focusing now. And we're going to collect those soon and put the bags together for the families. And we're hoping to get extra food to help the backpack program. So that's basically.
Any questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you. So just want to give the Board an update. Last week, we had our School Start Time Committee meeting. Willow was there and Mike was there as Board Reps. From that discussion, so we had, we had a meeting earlier in the year. We also had a meeting, a joint meeting with other districts who have committees in place a couple of weeks, I guess about three weeks ago. The general consensus from the group was that they didn't view, feel that we had a problem. And feel free, Willow might to add to this, in that without identifying a problem, this seems like a large undertaking and perhaps unnecessary for a people's time. So we, we had looked at the metrics that the Strategic Planning Committee had developed, looked at some of the data. And so I shared with the group, at the ti, at the meeting, we had, I had planned that we would break into subgroups and the discussion kind of led in a different direction. So therefore, we're doing a school climate survey beginning, for students, it'll be December 13th. The surveys themselves will be available starting December 6 through the 20th. And the climate survey is for students, staff, and parents. So we thought we would do that, gather that information, and then we would put that data together to see if there was anything within that to indicate we should, you know, consider in this process. So we agreed that we should administer that survey, and then we would reconvene the committee sometime in the, probably early February to look at that and discuss where we're going to go at this point.
Can I just ask a quick question? How many people are on that committee? And what is the makeup of it?
There's probably 20-some people on the committee. It's a combination, actually, the student, from Student Senate was just here as one of the student reps. There's three student reps, there's parent reps, teacher reps, support staff, administration, and Board reps. So it's a pretty representative group.
Thanks.
And also, I just wanted to mention that, as I said, the school climate survey will be going out. We are going to do one designated time in school, the 13th, for grades, it's only, the student, the survey's designed for students in grades five through 12. It's a U.S. Department of Ed survey that's been out for a couple of years now. So hopefully, we want to obviously gather as much student data to get that feedback. So, and we generally get very good parent response. So if it's open for two weeks, we should, I would imagine, get good responses from the group and staff response.
Is this a survey we've used before, or is this the first time?
This is the first time. It was developed by the Department of Ed as part of ESA. In the state, they haven't officially adopted it, but they've been asking districts to pilot it. So we took that survey and basically just broke it up and doing it through Survey Monkey.
And as Ms. Monroe mentioned, we had looked at the metrics and didn't see any problems that starting school later would be a solution for. But the group decided that we would wait to see the results of the survey, take a look at those results, and if there was anything that came up as concerns, then we would consider that in making our final decision about whether to move ahead with examining this issue. So once we, you know, have results, we'll schedule another meeting and discuss it at that point.
And I, I would just add that I, and I said so at the meeting, I had some amount of dissatisfaction with the analysis, the conclusion that was reached by most of the people, that we don't have a problem to address using the metrics that were provided, because I'm just not sure that one necessarily related to the others. I did not feel like it was the, the best, the best way to sort of measure whether or not there's an issue. I mean, the overwhelming consensus of, of most representatives in the room was that they haven't seen one, they don't see one, that kids wouldn't sleep more if they were given an extra hour to do so. And there was a lot of sort of personal anecdotes, but I, I'm not convinced that the, that the data that we were using really drove the analysis. But, but I am interested to see how the climate survey pans out and whether that provides any additional insight.
Okay. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is the Board report. I will mention that several of us were at the Middle School Character Awards Breakfast last week. It's a program that they do three times a year. Where staff nominate students who they see doing something in the school that demonstrates good character traits. And it's always a wonderful event. The kids, by and large, are very proud to be getting their certificates and meeting the superintendent and the Board members. I'm sure that really is big excitement for them. But I just want to thank everyone at the middle school who runs that program, and I think it really teaches important lessons to the students about the, the need to show good character, not only within school, but outside of school. And let's see, there was something else I was going to mention, but I don't recall what it was. So I will throw it open to the Board members.
I went in yesterday to the high school in the morning and to, I was here at Elsmere in the afternoon and had a great chance to see what's going on in a lot of our classrooms. And also, Meredith and I had a chance to see the, where the backpack program is, is being put together and to get some more information about that. And it was, it was, provided a lot of really good information. And I just wanted to say thank you to the organizers at the high school and Mrs. Claus here at the, at Elsmere.
That prompted me that, that's what I was going to mention, is that several Board members went on school visits yesterday, and then at the end of the day, we gathered together with the principals so they could hear the Board members' feedback on what they saw in the classroom. So do any of the other members want to comment?
Yes. I went to the middle school yesterday, spent the majority of the day there. So first, thank you to Mike Klugman and Mark Warford for hosting me and setting up a great itinerary. I sat in on a team meeting, and it was interesting to see the behind the scenes on what goes on, talking about kids that are high, at high risk. They look at their grades, their test scores, and all of the teachers participate in, in the house that they're assigned to. So if something good is happening to a student, or there's a crisis, they all sit and they can talk about it. They also talk about the character awards and the students that they nominate. So it's not just one teacher nominating, they all sit and discuss it. And they meet like three to four times a week, which I thought was pretty eye-opening to see how intense it was and the additional work that they do on top of being in the classroom, which I wasn't aware. You know, you hear about the team meetings, but you actually never see them, or are they imaginary? So it was, it was really nice to get to witness that and get to meet some of the teachers in, in the Hudson House. I also got to meet with all of the counselors, which I thought was great. They shared with me some of the programming that they're doing. And one thing that I wasn't aware of is that 80% of the counselor's time is spent on counseling curriculum, and they're pushing into classrooms and teaching skills like empathy. I know at the middle school, they were talking about the second step program, which is a little bit different than the elementary, but, and then I also got to see a program that Mark brought from another school district, Mr. Warford, the Grow Program. And we talked about it at a Board meeting not that long ago, but what was interesting was to see the Grow Room and what, what goes, what's involved in the program and how the kids check in every day to see, these are also high-risk students who need a little more support, and we're monitoring to see how they are successful at the high school later on through this program. But they all check in in the morning, they go in after school, and I think there was like 15 kids there in the room. There's an actual room, and they were there doing their homework. And it was just really a nice day, and I enjoyed it tremendously, and I hope all of you get to, to do that at some point, because it was really a great experience.
Anyone else?
Sure. So I also spent the morning in the high school with the AP Psychology, Human Geography, and Lab School Science classes. I was, I have not spent much time in the high school, and I was absolutely blown away by the teachers and the students, how dynamic the instruction was and how engaged students were. Some of the discussions just absolutely blew my mind, much different from what I remember when I was in high school. And then I spent the afternoon here at Elsmere, where I was brought to just about every classroom. It was such a good tour. And again, just the, the level of engagement, watching, you know, third graders make PowerPoint presentations about government in native Aztec society. Again, I just, I, I was just so impressed. It was, I felt very lucky that I got to spend the day doing that. So thank you.
And I spent the morning at the high school. I too was really impressed by all the teachers that we saw and the students, their level of engagement and enthusiasm was really, gave me a lot of hope for our future. So thank you to all the teachers and to Mr. Demille for arranging everything. The thing that stuck out to me the most was just seeing physically how that school worked and what it actually looks like in terms of the, the way that classes, that students change rooms between classes and how our facilities are functioning that way. I was really impressed by, you know, the hallways did not seem crowded, the, there wasn't a lot of chaos or confusion. Everything seemed to be running very smoothly. And so I was, really appreciated that, that environment that I saw. And you don't really get to know that kind of stuff until you actually go into the school and see it functioning. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who opened up their classroom and their school for us to see, and I hope to do it more, because it really does give you a great idea about how our schools are functioning.
Just to add on to one, one of the things that Willow said, it's different from the high school experience that we had. And I think it's a testament from elementary to middle school to high school, what the teachers do in our district, because I don't think you can appreciate it till you see it at the end and the difference when you go into the high school to see all of the skills that our, our students have learned and just the academic excellence that just permeates this whole district. And it is a really beautiful thing to see, and when you go into the schools, you really get to see that. So thank you for everybody who hosted, because it was awesome.
And the Policy Committee met on Monday night, and we had a very productive session. We got through a lot of policies, so fair warning, there'll be a lot of policies for first reading next week. So plan ahead.
On that, on that note, I did want to just say that right before I came here, I got the issue of the NISBA's On Board Magazine, and it mentioned a bunch of new policies that we should be enacting, and I haven't gone through to look to make sure we've actually done all those things, this new sexual harassment policy and all the new mandatory language. So I just wanted to make sure that we were keeping up on that and making sure that the policies that we are, that are mandatory, we are revamping.
We can discuss that article on our next policy meeting? Okay. Anything else from any Board members? Okay, our presentation tonight is on Nature's Classroom, and the presentation will be by Ms. Claus.
I'm Kate Claus, the principal at Elsmere, and I'm here with fifth-grade teachers extraordinaire and Nature's Classroom experts, Peg Buffaline and Mike Valenti. We're happy to be talking about Nature's Classroom. It's a, a very fine topic that we're, we're proud to be a part of. So. I'm going to do the old fad. So Nature's Classroom has been around in Bethlehem for more than 20 years. We don't really have the exact dates, but it's been around for a very long time. Initially, the classes went to Lawson's Lake, and there, they didn't have a professional staff, actually. So we have some people that went to Lawson's Lake. Great. So it was parent-run, really. The, the parents cooked and led the classes. They may not have been experts in the topics, but they read about them and, and they taught the kids nonetheless. And so I think that it was a good experience, but it evolved. And then Bethlehem started to participate in Nature's Classroom Incorporated. So it's really, it's a company, corporation, and they train their staff and they run classes. We've been to various places. We've been to Beckett, Massachusetts, or Andover, or Silver Bay. You can see there's a couple of there. And we originally were going for the entire week. The cost went up, so we now go for three days and two nights. All Bethlehem students, all fifth graders, are invited to attend. Some go in the fall, some go in the spring. So the cost is approximately $280 per student. Different schools pay for that in different ways. Some are partially sponsored by PTA, some students get scholarships, some do the entire fundraising themselves, depending on the school that they go to. It is staffed, like I said, by Nature's Classroom staff, and they explore indoor and outdoor activities, a lot of team building and so forth. So we're going to give you a little picture of what that looks like. Hopefully, if I can control. Okay. So turn it over. Nature's Classroom, they do have heat, and they have bathrooms and facilities. They're not out in tents, and that's what some of the concern are from the children. This is in Beckett, and this is the manor, which is the most updated building that they have there. We're a smaller school, so we are able to use that one building, and we have the boys upstairs or the girls upstairs, depending on the numbers and what's best for the kids. There's two other buildings, Wellsprings and Four Seasons, that are there. Bunk bed situation, and that's how nice it looks when they first get there. Give them about 10 minutes, and it doesn't look like that any longer. But the children are in bunk beds, and they get to room with friends, and we, you know, each school does it different, but we have them choose people they'd like to hang around with, pal around with, the time that they're at Nature's Classroom. Want to talk about dining?
Sure. That is a relatively new dining facility. The old one had an accident several years ago, but as you can see, it's huge. But also, the nurse is staffed in there, as well as the coordinator of NC is in there as well. What's nice about Nature's Classroom is everything is now nut-free, totally 100%. And for those students that do have allergies, the chef will literally come out, take the student into the back of the kitchen, show them everything, just to give them, you know, a better sense of what's going on. And what's nice, for breakfast, there's always a breakfast bar, as in cereal and yogurt, not, you know, adult beverages. And they ought to go along with, whether it be scrambled eggs, French toast, whatever the hot choice is. Lunch and dinner, there's always a salad bar to go along with whatever they're having for lunch. Chicken or steak, we've had, pizza, tacos, just a plethora of items. And even the most picky of students eats when they're there. And they, we always get a lot of parents saying, oh, they don't eat, they don't eat. Well, they eat there. So it's amazing to see them, and it's served buffet-style, so they can, you know, get as many plates as they want. But in a little bit, we'll kind of show you how that can sometimes come back to haunt them in a little bit. Speaking of a little bit, it's the ort report. What they try to teach the children is about wasted food, all the food on the plate that they're not eating, and it gets weighed and measured. And they kind of really compare that to what's going on in the world. Look at everything we just wasted. Look at all the resources we just used, and think about the resources we have in the world and how they're dwindling down. Normally, it starts off high, the first meal, because they see buffet-style and they pile it on. And then usually, they learn a lesson, and as the week goes on, it goes down, and they really want to try to get, you know, oh, we want to get no ort. Well, that's hard to do, to get no leftover foods, things like that, but they really start to learn, and it's a skill we hope that they take home with them as well.
Nature's Classroom, the schedule is really divided into two sections. Field group, which some of the, did anyone go to Nature's Classroom in the audience? So you remember, field group. A field group was a time when you are with a specific counselor in a group, the ratio about 12 to 1, and you do activities with that counselor, which is one of the teachers. And in that group, it could be going on a nature hike. It could be going and looking for proof that there's wildlife there. There are activities, and they're with them in field group, and that's a set group. Then there's also classes, and in classes, children sign up for those. And those, we have some pictures of a variety of classes. There's dissections that children can choose to participate in, they do not have to. There's building geometric domes. There's building Burma Bridges. There are, doing research in history. There's drama classes. There's art classes. There's writing classes. And these, the children are just so excited, and the Nature's Classroom staff get up after lunch, and they sell their class, and they really want to entertain the children to get them to come to their class. They have classes like egg drop. You have to learn how to protect your egg and drop it from the balcony. They have build parachutes. And there's just so many different types of classes, and those are offered now that we are only there for the two and a half days. One day, they'll offer two classes, which the kids, I mean, it's just such a great day that they really look forward to these different classes, the dissections in nature. They're out in nature regardless of the weather, unless it's thunderstorms or things like that. So, you know, talking about the packing list and having them prepared.
One thing that's nice is before they actually do and build and make these things, they're introduced to the science behind it, the math behind it, the social studies behind it. So they're getting a lesson firsthand first, then they're taking those skills and putting them to use by building just several different things. So it's not just, hey, let's go out and build it. They're learning about the science and the technology and the math and everything that goes along with it as well.
Some proof, there is some wildlife there.
Yeah, the kids, the kids do get nervous. They ask about, you know, are we going to see bears, are we going to see coyote, are we going to see all those things? And we tell them that if you're a bear and you see 50 of us around, you're probably not going to watch them near it. You're going to avoid it. And I, then I also tell them not to worry about it unless they're the slowest child. All right, go ahead.
So, and we do evening activities, and they have varied over the years. Most recently, we have night hike, where, where they're out using their senses, and that runs for about an hour or so. We've started to do the Oregon Trail, which in fifth grade really ties into our informational writing, Westward Expansion. And Nature's Classroom, each year, they're like, they're so impressed when the Bethlehem students come. They're like, they knew so much, and we're so happy to just tie them perfectly with our writing unit and all the nonfiction reading. Sometimes they'll have a fire at, at Beckett, Massachusetts, where they have, they have a fire pit, and if the weather permits, they'll go down after an evening activity. They always wrap it up. It's not just like, thank you for having a good day, we'll see you tomorrow. It's a nice wrap-up to what they learned, talking about history or whatever the activity was, and then some type of snack and, and evening meds. Teamwork is one of the biggest things in Nature's Classroom, team building. If any student had gone there, you learn maybe for the first time that in order to, you know, survive, you had to do things with a team. And we know with the Survivor Day, that's team building, that's one of the challenges. And this is just a great way, you're working with kids. And what's beautiful about it is sometimes you're working with students, even though Elsmere's a small school, you may not have done anything with this child since first grade, and now all of a sudden, you're expected to figure out a problem together and do teamwork. And of course, some entertainment after meals, which is a highlight of Nature's Classroom.
And there's a lot of positive aspects with, oh, look at me, team building and personal growth and the tradition. And Elsmere started a tradition, I don't know how many years ago, out inviting the high school seniors back to Elsmere for a big assembly, and we honor them. They have to write down a highlight from their time at Elsmere. And as much as Peg and I would love to say that they're writing about that math lesson we did, or that science lesson, 90% of what they write about is their experience in Nature's Classroom with their friends and the teamwork and doing all those activities together. And it really brings them together, and they, the experience is just something they'll always remember. I know we have some students out here that I was talking to before that remember, you know, so much about the events and everything that took place during that time as well.
I would add to the, the personal growth part. For many of these children who attend, it's their first time really being away from home for three days, and they survive it, and they actually learn to thrive too. So that's a terrific bonus as well. So we wanted to give you an opportunity to experience a little bit of what occurs at Nature's Classroom. So I hope no one's too squeamish, but we have, we're going to pass out some things. One, we're going to give you maybe about 10 minutes to work on dissecting an owl pellet. So we'll ask somebody to come up here so that the audience can see as you're dissecting, and we'll pass out the materials. We do have gloves for you. All right. So we have one pellet for every two people, so just split it in half, and you're going to share it. And these are your official poking tools. You un-bend.
Thank you.
So that's what you're looking for. Okay? And you just break it apart, and then poke it.
All right. Let's do it.
Well, if somebody could come, do you have one who's going to come up here?
I was going to say Alexis 26 and Ryan's 30.
Yes, so you can, you can be the one, the lucky one to come up here. And partner. Starting working. Okay, here we go. So you're going to be looking for these items in the owl pellet. So you might want to break it and then start kind of poking it apart. You can put your bones on it. Here's your two rings. Okay. You can see.
Prophesies fossils.
Come on, John.
That's our dinner.
Break it apart.
Oh, goodness.
Now we need to.
I think the nine has have to.
Looks like the mouse that was in my basement.
Oh, no.
We have another quarter with the skull.
How do I know what's what here?
They regurgitated.
So they don't have?
Oh, bone matching.
Yeah, I think that's just a little piece of something.
Oh, my.
Stay back until tomorrow.
This one.
Yeah.
A lot of bones.
So if you can figure out which animal.
Oh, my.
So this is, it's a regurgitation.
Somebody's hand.
Their fingernails, right?
Oh, that's.
A web?
From which animal.
So this is where they found Jimmy.
This looks like.
I have some.
This looks like some sort of deer.
It could be a rodent.
So you see the little teeth there?
Yeah.
So this is some kind of rodent.
Oh, does it have teeth?
So you should be able to then find.
Are those their teeth?
No.
I don't know.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I didn't notice.
That looks like, wait, that looks like a jaw.
Yeah, could be a jawbone.
So that's a jaw.
I thought it was like a talon or something.
Oh, maybe it's that, of a shrew.
Maybe.
Yep. So you should then look for the rest of it.
Where do you get these out?
He regurgitated it.
Oh, you buy them? As long as she wasn't out collecting them.
And you know, like, it's weird.
Without the other part of it.
It would have been probably possibly.
Like you tell her students?
Yeah, yeah, tell your students that.
Yeah, that's definitely.
There's some sort of bone.
It looks like, you know, like a human.
That's the head, skull, the tooth.
Oh.
So there's the, there's the, that and that.
Okay. Was that the only thing that it swallowed?
It's only head, I see.
So this is claw.
Yeah. That was all mom and daddy.
Yeah.
This looks like that's.
Probably rodent.
Well, it's definitely some sort of a skull. And it's got these like crazy.
That?
Maybe like an armor.
Because I just see the.
There's some teeth.
That looks really similar to that.
Yes.
I sense another noggin in here.
It's like, oh, there's got a.
It's like grown-up LOL.
Now I suddenly understand why my kids like them. Part of a pelvic. Oh, yeah, you missed LOL. I didn't have that when my kids were little. It's the most ridiculous waste of money I've ever experienced.
Pelvic bones.
We found some pelvic bones.
They sort of like dig through them and find the pieces, and it's just like.
We think this is a rodent. It's like a ensemble.
You find the pieces and assemble them, and they do totally forget they exist.
Well, this is kind of, it looks like this is, yeah, it looks like it's closed in. This, we, I'm not quite sure. Well, it's really sharp, and we think it's got teeth here. Something like teeth. So it might be a chaw. Yeah. I don't know, but that looks pretty.
We were better off with the owl.
I was going to say, that's worse, isn't it? Oh, yeah.
We have, we have a little.
It is educational.
We found some good stuff in there.
And LOL, and a sewing machine.
This is the biggest. Maybe, maybe a shop with a sewing machine.
This is a very competitive board.
Oh, you're actually, actually like bingo style.
Oh, no, we got one too. Very good. We're okay. Our owl really went to town on this, whatever it was.
They accidentally broke the job.
We were first.
Okay.
Still some stuff.
Yeah. I think we got everything.
The teeth look like a rodent.
Wow.
How's Chris doing?
Yeah, I know. So what do we do with this?
Well.
Well, I never knew that. I was processing. She actually, she really wanted to come today, and I bet she would have been up here with me. Souvenir to take home with you and your coat.
Yeah.
It's a little hard to bring it home to you.
We did conceptualize.
Or you can tell we're in an elementary school and sanitizer.
It's got teeth. It's a skull of a rodent that an owl ate and kind of regurgitated.
So you think, come on, you know they want.
I, I, I think I can.
So apparently, owls regurgitate.
I'll keep the bones I already have.
That I'm trying to take all the fuzz off. It's like a hairball but coming out.
Trying to take the hair off, but it's.
That's pretty cool.
That is wild.
Yeah. So who knew that they threw up everything they ate? And they can't eat again until they regurgitate. Oh, they have to throw up first before they eat.
Gotcha.
People come out in the old.
I want to get my bones.
I don't know about that.
I hear your request for livening it up. I'll do my best to.
You can take it or show it, tell. Here, you have the teeth.
Are you going to announce?
Absolutely. I'm good.
Not intentional.
That was close.
Right.
We can nod.
Whatever you want to do.
Well, thank you for that demonstration. And I was talking to Ms. Bubbling, and she had my younger son Alex, who's now 26, and my son Brian is 30, and to this day, they still talk about Nature's Classroom and some of the adventures they had there. But I think it's a wonderful program, and I'm so glad we're continuing to do it.
We are too.
Yes.
So on that said, we are, we're big fans, but there are still some issues and some conversations that we've been having over the past couple of years. Number one, probably most important, is the, the cost. It is an expensive program at $280, approximately a student. The cost has risen primarily due to student nursing situation.
Insurance.
Insurance, yes. So we decided on Bethlehem that we'll have, we would like to have an RN rather than an EMT at each Nature's Classroom experience. That's $2,000 a week. So we split that between two schools. So for each school, it's $1,000 for a nurse, for an RN. But we do have students who have significant health concerns that can attend because we provide the nurse for them. The Nature's Classroom staff, as I said, it is, the, the staff are all trained, they all have bachelor's degrees, except for they.
Every one's a.
Sometimes they'll take an intern.
We've never, I've never either, but.
That said, some are better than others, just like in any occupation. Some people are stronger than others. I think that overall, overall, our experience, it's amazing, our students arrive at 10 o'clock and by 12:30, they cannot wait to see that staff again, they can't wait for that class. And by the time we leave, they don't want to leave because.
Tears.
Teachers are so phenomenal in their area of expertise, and I agree.
Yeah.
We've been fortunate to have a great director, Home Slice. I don't know what his real.
Eric.
No.
Eric.
They remember Home Slice.
Home Slice, yeah.
Your Home Slice may be moving on to other adventures.
But he would be probably, I mean, I've been going over 20 years, he's probably the fourth.
Fourth or fifth, yeah.
Program coordinator, fourth or fifth at the most that we've had. Sometimes they do rotate them from site to site throughout Rhode Island, Connecticut, wherever they have Nature's Classroom, but Home Slice has been there, and he's been a great support. Anytime we send him an email or a, anything, he always has.
Right away.
A quick response.
There have been questions in other schools. This is, teachers are volunteering their time for this. They don't get paid any extra. They're leaving their, their families, they're there 24 hours supervising the children. It's a huge responsibility. Our teachers here have always attended happily. Not everybody is in the same situation. If they have young children at home, or they have, you know, people that they need to care for in other ways, it could be very challenging for some fifth-grade teachers. But because it has been such a tradition, there really is pressure for fifth-grade teachers to attend this. And I think it's, for some people, it's harder, and so we just need to be sure that we acknowledge that, that it is a volunteer, and it's not necessarily something that's a given always, but that it's people giving their time and really making sure that children are safe and that this is happening for them. We are going to be meeting as a group next week, next Wednesday, the fifth-grade teachers, the principals, Jody, and to talk about, are there other options that we might have to provide this kind of team-building and personal growth opportunity and other experiences for children? So just had to acknowledge that there are some things that are in the works as well. So we'll just open it up to any questions.
Do you have challenges finding parent volunteers?
No. Our, our challenge is we have to turn several away because of the situation. We have more than we can actually handle, so that, knock on wood, has never been an issue here.
I think that's true with all the schools.
Yeah.
I mean, we have parents that will volunteer to bring luggage.
Just so they can.
And I have a car, and then they show up in a Volkswagen bug, and I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But they got, they felt great, they got to see their child off goodbye, so we have so many volunteers, it's fantastic.
Well, for anybody who has younger children, being a parent volunteer, there is a great experience.
Yeah, it really is.
How do you handle situations if you have a child who can't afford the cost?
No child is ever denied a trip to Nature's Classroom due to finances, and I think every school does it a little differently. There are scholarships available, some, we fundraise quite a bit. We have our big plant sale, which we've had for over 20 years, and we are able to take a little bit off for each child, and if a child needs it, there is a funding available. We used to go through BOU and ask for scholarships, so each school does it very differently. And I know concerns have come up about costs, and I think at this meeting next week, maybe put some of our heads together, what can we do for the entire community in BC?
Some of the schools use their PTA for scholarships, and others don't have that ability, or the PTAs may plan for a certain number in, in any given year, their, that number could increase quite a bit. It could be more. And so that, they're correct, I think that it can be a challenge. BOU does not give scholarships anymore for this. They feel like they have more requests for other more significant needs that they should be supporting than, you know, field trips, which is fine, but we just need to be cognizant of the cost for families who really can't afford it and what the plan is.
And we do have some two, parents and families that go above and beyond as far as the fundraising they do. So the extra, from there, we can move it and shift it to certain other families that may need that extra bit of money as well.
Okay.
Thank you for this awesome program.
Thank you.
No, in, in my opinion, you know, we do an awesome job of, you know, math and reading and science and all these things, and those are, those are awesome skills, very important, but life skills are equally as critical, and to give, to give kids the opportunity to be in a different setting and learn those skills is tremendous. And then in addition, there are students that are in the classroom that you would never know had a certain set of skills, because the classroom is either a struggle or intimidating or whatever, but then you put them out in the woods and suddenly.
And they shine.
You know, you got Daniel Boone out there, you know, leading the frontier, and it's, thank you, this awesome, awesome program.
And if we weren't, you know, 100% behind it, it was like we said, we wouldn't give up time with our families, but we, Peg and I have been doing this now for, Peg for 20, me for 17. It's just, you know, it's what we know and it's what we do, and it's, we see what the kids get out of it, so we don't even give it a second thought.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you as well. I, the first time I realized that fifth-grade teachers go on this trip and, you know, spend 48 hours, 72 hours, whatever it is, of their own time, I was, I was shocked. So I really wanted to know how much we appreciate it, and we understand if not everyone can, as, as Mrs. Claus was saying. Is there anything that you feel you need to make that time easier for you or, or to do something more for the students?
You know, we have so much support for Mrs. Claus, we have so much support from our parents, and the fact that I think we've done it for so long, it's just what we do. I, I, I was just talking that, I don't know what I would do if I came here and someone else was taking my kids to Nature's Classroom and we weren't getting on the bus with them. Yes, we actually like to ride on the bus with our 48 students.
Likes a strong word.
Sing the ride, whole ride home. But thank you, though.
Yeah.
And it is, it's just such a great program. Both of my children went, I know Mrs. Claus's three children went, and many parents here have had their children go, and it is such a great program, but, you know, thank you.
I did just want to know, so what do you do if there is a medical emergency or any sort of other emergency? Do parent, how, how do you communicate with parents?
There, I mean, there's a process we go through. There's a hospital just a couple miles away in case that was, but if there was ever a fever or anything, yes, we contact parents, we take it from there, or they'll contact doctors. It really would depend on the situation.
Okay.
But, you know, they've seen everything, they've handled everything, they've dealt with everything, and it's really just a matter of, if it's a high fever, yes, we'll call the parents, see what steps we want to take next. If it's a, could be a vomiting issue, we take, again, we just take the proper precautions, kind of the same thing we would do here at school, and, you know, take the proper steps from there.
And the nurse is 24 hours, she's right there in the facility, we have her cell phone number available, and anytime we might have, someone has that headache and it's 11:30 at night, there within minutes.
Yep.
I have a question. I, I've had three kids go through Nature's Classroom. One got the five-day extravaganza, and the next two got the three-day. And one of the issues with the three days was the sought-after activities. I'm not sure if your group, because it's a little bit smaller, encounters that, but is that still an issue with the three-day activities not being able to get into those groups?
They threw, we, the first year we went, which the kids that are juniors, that's the first year that it was cut down to three days, there was so much jam-packed into those three days, we were, we were amazed. And now that we do the three days, the first year, we're like, we really missed the four, the three nights, four days, but they.
is that still an issue with the three day activities not being able to get into those groups?
They threw, we, the first year we went, which the kids that are juniors, that's the first year that it was cut down to three days, there was so much jam packed into those three days. We were, we were amazed. And now that we do the three days, the first year, we're like, we really missed the four, the three nights, four days. But they really have worked it out for us. And the children still get field group, they do their evening activities. So another day would be great, but I really feel Nature's Classroom has done a nice job arranging the schedule for us and really jam packed with the classes and.
They've cut down a little bit on the break time in order to kind of include.
To accommodate extra.
And to get more field groups in. So, so not as, not as much break and rest time, but more activity time.
And the Nature's Classroom program coordinator, Home Slice, has come over the years and wants to know.
Eric.
What, what do your kids want? What would you like your kids? So he really bases on what we tell him as their teachers. So if we know we have a really math group.
Math, or a science group, do a lot of science. It really depends on, if we know there's some kids that are into drama, we see, they get a little drama program in there as well. So every year, it really depends on what we see from the students throughout the year and then we kind of curtail the program to them.
And I'm sure mine were more towards the beginning of the, the change. So I'm sure there's been changes since then. But to answer your question, Meredith, I've encountered all of the emergencies at Nature's Classroom. So I had a child come home sick with 102 fever and it was devastating on day two. And I've also had a diabetic, not during Nature's Classroom, but go up as a lab schooler at Beckett. And they're so accommodating and they can call at any time. And usually you have the nurse's cell phone number, so if you need to get in touch with them. So it's really well organized in, in regards to health issues.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay. Next is finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through three.
Some of. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. The, in looking at the unpaid, this is the unpaid list, Judy. Is this the normal amount or roughly that we normally do not see?
We don't see it now, but we will see it. What happens with these unpaid taxes is they get re-leveied on the January property tax bills. Then the county collects that as part of their collection and then it gets remitted to the school district usually in April. So there's a delay on when we get it, but we do get it 100%.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Thank you.
And we want to thank the Slingelands PTO for their donation. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through seven.
Some of. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through nine.
Some moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through three.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next, we'll have recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board? Okay. Pig students, it's your lucky night. Our next board meeting is next Wednesday, December 5th, at the high school, 7:00 PM with a 6 o'clock anticipated executive session. And then the next meeting after that is Wednesday, December 19th, at Glenmont Elementary, 7:00 PM, 6 o'clock executive session. There's no reason for us to go back into executive session, so can I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pig students, please come up and sign out.